Tonight.
Oh.
That kind of one.
Okay, we are ready to leave whenever you are.
I brought it up.
And we're by the old place or my fortress.
Okay, yeah, well, whatever. If you can, you can, if you can.
Cemetery offices.
My glass was most really been dirty yesterday.
I have to get back right away and take my glasses off, please.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, if you would stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I think like you said, I could sell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Consider it all right forward to the stand.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good morning, and we have time for public comment. Do we have any guests today? Seeing none, we will move on um to the agenda. We have one addition that we would like to make to the agenda. Is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair. We will be adding, we would recommend adding under item twelve approval of the hire of an assistant county attorney.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to make an addition to our agenda. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
The agenda has been amended. Okay, now we move on to the minutes of our last get together here, our last meeting. Any questions on the minutes from our last meeting?
Madam Chair, I'd move the, uh, to approve the September twenty-one board meeting minutes.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded to accept our minutes. Any discussion, any questions? Hearing none, we will take the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
All right, I believe Brian is first on the agenda today.
Good morning. Brian Cruz, County Sheriff. Just a couple items for you this morning. The first is hiring of two full-time corrections officers. Sheila Elman and Weston Hine, both effective October eighteenth, and they will be starting on Level B twenty-two Step One, which is twenty fifty-three four. And their exams are done, so.
All right, Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the, uh, full-time corrections officers Sheila Elman and Weston Hine. B twenty-two Step One, twenty fifty-three an hour, effective October eighteenth.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Madam, go ahead. Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Do we have any discussion? Questions for Brian on this? These positions have been vacant for a little while and he is budgeted for us.
Yeah, these are open positions. We still have one additional open that we're in hiring process with right now.
Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So the second item I have before you, this is a quote for our jail control board in our jail. Um, this is the control board that govern or controls the doors, the intercom system, and all the internal workings in there. This is a non-budgeted item. This isn't something that we were planning or expecting um at the point we're at right now.
Morning, Mr. Chris. Not too bad. Okay.
What is it that is?
What did you do today?
I don't know. Didn't do my morning prayers, I guess.
It's the WebEx. People are signing into it.
I know, exactly.
Yeah?
Um, so this is our jail control board. This wasn't a planned item. Uh, this is something that needs to be addressed. Um, it's a critical issue. It's out of date in a, in a couple different ways, so um IT is actually who brought this to our attention. Uh, we did get a quote for it. It won't impact our budget because we were unable to purchase.
Yeah, well, that don't sound good at all.
Sitting there, it will not affect our budget. So, um, asking for approval on this, the cost is eighteen dollars, nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Move to approve purchase of active controls, licensing upgrade and installation. I didn't realize we had anything that was running one oh seven anymore.
Yep, yep. If I have trouble getting the updated, uh...
We have a motion on the board. Do we have a second?
From the county, you know, other values. I'll let you know, but...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any questions for Brian?
So you'll have any, will there be any issue getting this done with everything that's going? I mean, you can get, get it. What's the deadline? When will it be put in?
They'll be, it's a few weeks off. They'll be a week.
And what's the story on the cars? They're just not going to be available?
There, so we got, the cars we actually got this year were cars we're supposed to have last year.
So.
They've now reopened for ordering. There's no way we're getting those this year. So I'll be coming to you in probably next couple of board meetings, but those we're not getting until next year. So we will not get squads under the budget this year. That happened, so we got behind two years ago when Ford shut down their factory, revamped it, had issues, then we, everybody got behind. So we are essentially one year behind on squads. We'll be okay because we have, two of the squads we bought this year are people that are on leave, so those squads haven't moved in four months, so there's no miles being put on them. So four or five years from now, when we field this, it won't be that big of an impact, so we'll be okay.
So, and if we use a part-timer, do they just take whoever squad they're filling in for?
No, we have, um, three spare slash part-time squads, and, and those are squads that we've run out through patrol and we just hang on to them so they don't, they don't rack up miles on the other cars.
Good, thank you.
I was noticing in the, uh, the expenses for this month, have we had some accidents with our squads? There's been some work done, Dave Carlson and different places. I thought, oh, so...
Yep. Yep, uh, we've had a, we've had a couple, um, accidents. We've had a couple of pursuits, which is, um, we terminate those pursuits using a pit maneuver, pursuit intervention technique, technique, which is contacted in a car and sometimes the cars get damaged.
Yep.
So, yep.
So that took them out of commission for a little while, then you have to have spare and, I'm okay.
Right, yep.
Very good. Any other questions or discussion for Brian on the motion which we have here? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good, and I just have one item of information for you. Um, our emergency management director is working on our hazard mitigation plan. Um, that's done every five years. Um, we're in the midst of working on that. Last time, um, Beth sat on that, so just information for you, something to think about. She's going to be reaching out, looking for a commissioner to sit on, on this again, and what this is, is, um, emergency management looks at, um, you know, areas of flooding in the county and, and things like that. Can we mitigate it using federal funding, local funding? Should we mitigate it? That's what this plan is, and it gets revamped every five years. It's just part of our agreement with the money that we give from it. So, something free to think about. She'll be reaching out, looking for a commissioner for that, so. So I have, thank you.
Brian, are all your officers wearing the breast cancer support badge?
Um, the ones, the ones who have them purchased, but our newer deputies didn't get them in time, so not everybody is wearing them.
Okay, that's great that they support it though.
Very nice.
Thank you.
All right, Phil.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Bill Schloss about the work started. Um, one item for you this morning. I'm seeking approval of a certificate of support for the city of Cosmos related to a financial assistance application they're putting together for road projects with USDA. So the road projects, it's primarily underground infrastructure, sewer, water, storm sewer on their city streets, not on our state aid system, but on city streets. And my understanding is the USDA wants certificates of support from other local government entities basically saying we would support a project like this and it doesn't conflict with anything we're doing.
And it has no financial impact according to this. Madam Chair, I'll, I move to approve certificate of support for the city of Cosmos related to their pursuit of financial assistance through the USDA.
Do I hear a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion. It has been seconded. Any additional questions for Phil? I looked this over and, and I thought, oh, are we getting in, are we involved with the little, the little cities? And I wondered which of our little towns are even considered a city where they would apply for funds and do some of their own work? And I wrote down like, well, Grove City has a public works, I think, Cosmos, but how about, um, Forest City or Manana or, you know, Strout, some of the little?
Forest City is considered a city. Manana and Strout are not organized, so they, the roads within those two entities would be township, township roads.
Township then, where then you're involved with some of that?
Yes.
Decision making and such?
Maintenance. Uh, I mean, if they had to do a reconstruct or underground work, that would not involve the county.
All right, any other questions for Phil? Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
One reconstruction update. Our Cisalone reconstruct on the west side of Litchfield that runs down to Trunk Iowa seven is underway. They're doing a match and widening of the pavement right now. Um, mainline paving should start later this week, so.
What's their estimate end date?
The real one or what? Realistically, I'd say end of October is possible, if the weather cooperates. I think they've sent us a more aggressive timeline, but I, I don't know that it's realistic.
Because I would think we'd have an awful lot of farmers that would be using that road right now, and how disruptive is that?
Their completion date was end of September.
Okay.
So, we're handling that.
Nice thing is farmers are used to being disruptive.
Well, I know, but this has been a tough.
Why don't they do something?
This has been a tough enough year the way it is.
Usually we're the disruptors anyway. People on the road.
The road is and will remain open, so it's fire control. You'll be delayed, but you can still travel through the work zone.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Macau.
Good morning. Mikel Johnson, Human Resources Coordinator. I'm here to seek approval of the catastrophic medical leave bank policy. This would replace our current, uh, leave donation guidelines. This would create an anonymous pool, so the employees can choose to participate into the pool if they wish. If they do not participate into the pool, then they're not able to draw donations from it. The nice thing about this is it would really shore up how we're doing our donations. Um, right now, we have a specific individual that is named, and an email goes out saying that a certain person is looking for donated leave. Uh, so this would make it more anonymous, would have it go into a pool. Um, it would also get us more compliant with what the IRS uses for language for catastrophic medical leave, uh, where our current language does not have that. So it, it gets our policy more shored up with what that definition is. It has better language for what the process looks like so that employees have a more understanding of what would, what they would need to do to qualify for this. There are forms that would need to be filled out that they would need to request the donation from. And so it just, just clears up what this policy looks like so that both employees and the county are more on the same page, have better language, and more aligned with what the IRS is looking for, for the definition of catastrophic medical leave. Uh, so this, what I'm looking to do is I'm looking to implement this policy effective January first, so that people that currently have donated hours or maybe getting donated hours under our current policy have some time to use up those hours before this goes into effect. It also would give us opportunity during open enrollment to allow employees to make the decision whether they're going to participate in the pool or not. So open enrollment starts on October fifteenth, so online in Benefits Connect, when they go to choose all of their other benefits, they'll have the opportunity to decide if they want to, uh, participate in this pool or not. Eventually, the, the pool would be a larger, it would be eight hundred hours, but to just get this, uh, started, we're looking at doing six hundred hours instead, as that would take seventy-five employees that are choosing to participate. If we don't get enough participation in the, uh, new policy with the pool, then, uh, most likely the county would then possibly consider going for without any sort of donated leave policy, so.
So, if, if I'm a new employee and choose to participate, what does that mean? Is that like one day a year that I'm donating, or so much? I'm just curious. I don't know.
Yep, so initially would be eight hours that would be donated, so they, they would have the opportunity as a new hire. So it'd be, um, the, the opportunity to participate would be either at new hire or open enrollment. And so it would be eight hours as long as there's enough of, uh, of that, that eight hundred hours in the bank. If, if that pool gets lower than that, then the participating people will have to donate some hours to get that number back up.
So if I'm in a situation, I would come to you as Human Resources, and if I met the qualification, I would get that leave added to my leave to be used.
Correct.
And the only two people would know would be you and that person and probably timekeeping.
Yep, correct. And they do have to exhaust all of their, their accrued time before they can qualify for this as well.
Okay. Do you think the employees will favor this more because it's more anonymity involved in it?
The feedback I've gotten is, is positive as far as that aspect, yes, yep.
So when they donate their time then, let's say then they get to retirement age, at least with the contract I used to have, I could bank all of my sick leave, and then when I retired, I was paid that in a lump sum. That would be different. This is, they're gifting basically a portion of their sick leave to the collective bank each year.
Yep.
So then when they get to retirement age, they will not have as large a pool to receive a check from upon retirement, but it was a nice thing to do to help their colleagues within their work environment.
Right, yep, so they would have to donate some of their time in to participate, but then in doing so, that gives them the opportunity that if they do end up exhausting all of their time and they need something, then they can draw from that bank.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, new catastrophic medical leave bank policy.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Any additional questions or discussion for Macau?
I'm sure I know the answer, but the union has nothing to do with the policy that we set here, right? Thank you.
Any additional questions?
I was, I know, it was kind of my line of thinking too, is, I don't know, negotiations seem to be kind of a neutral impact that's voluntary.
Very good. Any other questions for Macau? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Macau.
Have a good afternoon. Morning, Greg. Morning, Greg.
Morning. Greg Schultz, Police Director. This morning I had two items for you for the board. First one is the Eden Valley, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-one twenty-five for contract for building code enforcement for Eden Valley leased housing. That property is located at one thousand forty-two Sturz Avenue East, Eden Valley, Minnesota. This is a contract that's about identical to the Watkins one. That one's signed in December of twenty twenty, I believe, except this is just for that property. Housing units going on to that property.
That's the part I didn't catch, was it's just for this one thing?
Just for that one property.
Okay.
So if they want to expand in the future, like Watkins didn't expand the scope of what they want the building official services to be.
And I would think that in that agreement, number five should cover it. City agrees to assume all responsibility and liability for services provided here and shall indemnify and hold the county harmless. So we're really, this is a...
Correct, and this is a, um, municipality with the county, so we're both local governments.
Okay.
We're held to the same standards.
Basically, it's just using the county's guidelines because they basically don't have...
It's the building code official.
Yes.
And I did make it clear that the enforcement would, the legal enforcement would be through the city of Eden Valley's legal counsel, not through the county attorney's office. So that's not something we agreed upon.
Madam Chair, I've moved to approve agreement with the city of Eden Valley for building code enforcement services at Eden Valley Leased Housing located at ten forty-two Sterns Avenue East.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
We have a motion. It has been seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Questions for Greg? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I have, is there just a trouble, uh, conditional use permit fifteen six six one, property located at fifty-six eight four-four US Highway twelve, Grove City, Minnesota, for parcels twelve zero two nine four zero 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 and sixteen zero two nine one zero zero zero. If you remember from the last meeting, it was tabled due to language of the conditions. And since that table on, uh, the August seventeenth commissioners meeting, myself, Randy and Greg Janz, the chair of the planning commission, that met, and we went over and changed some of the conditions. For questions basically six through ten, um, change the language on the vagueness of some of them. Question seven and eight were changed from will or willing to to shall to be less vague. Question nine was changed to expand the area of the livestock and poultry operations. Mr. Treble would be willing to hear about issues that could arise from the path of the aircraft. And question six and ten were changed to add wind direction as a reason for takeoff, approach and flight road directions. Let Mr. Treble know of these changes on, uh, September sixteenth and haven't heard any response from him back yet, so.
Is he currently using the Litchfield Airport for any of his travel?
Yes, that's where he houses his aircraft currently.
And is this a very busy endeavor? That is the least often, our, so records are kept and
Haven't seen.
comings and goings through the Litchfield Airport, but...
This is for a one owner operator plane, correct?
Yes, this is just for his, his own plane, not for municipality's.
However, he's not required to only own one plane.
So he has an owner operator, but he could have a fleet of six.
Correct.
And this was approved six to zero by the point? I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the changes in conditions for the treble landing strip conditional use permit.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion. It has been seconded. Is there any additional question? Now, the doubling of the fee was attached to this because this wasn't after the fact.
Correct.
And that's a doubling of the four hundred and fifty bucks or whatever it is, okay.
I realize that they meet all the ordinance, conditions and so forth. I just, I still, I struggle with this one because I know how I am myself. If I'm driving on four ninety-four and I'm seeing planes, I get a little mesmerized. Now I'm thinking, you know, not very often, but you're driving down twelve, you've got a plane coming, and you're going to start looking. And so I always think of kids and the school bus and so forth. I just, I wish you would have picked a different spot, but if it meets the ordinances, that's really the...
And it meets the min, uh, min dot aeronautical specifications as well.
He's still working with Fish and Wildlife.
Yes.
Because he's going to have to do some adjustments.
Wetland credits, correct.
And that is still being addressed. Any additional questions? For Greg?
Just correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, we're basically just adjusting our, our language. Just, I mean, we've already approved the general conditions.
No, no, this would be approval of the CUP.
As we tabled.
Because we, we continued it last time, and so.
Just to change the language.
Okay.
It, it's, it's not just approval of the change, it's approval of the CUP as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
And we didn't change the intent of the language. We just, um, made it a little more clear. We moved the vagueness and made it so that it was actually enforceable as wind direction is something that's usually documented, and so if there's trends with complaints, we can actually go back and kind of, it may not be completely accurate, um, at the time, but at least we'll be able to gauge some sort of standards.
There's quite a bit of work left to do on that particular strip anyway. I mean, I was by it the other day and it's...
After Big Range, there's a lot of water still standing. So there's a lot of grading you have to do and whatnot to shed the water.
Any additional questions? About the motion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Greg.
Uh, social services. Um, we have a group that is our county connections group, and they shared something this morning that I'd like to share with you all. Today is National Do Something Nice Day.
Good luck with that one with you.
Yeah, yeah, so, right before my accounts payable. In a matter of seconds, we hold the power to change the course of a person's day by being nice. The person day in question might even be our own, so. Really proud of the work that they're doing engaging our folks.
So it didn't say do multiple things nice. It says one.
Just one.
Well, they gave a list of potential ideas.
I got a list at home. I don't need any more.
We all have lists at home.
Exactly.
Here we are. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. My only order of business before you today is to approve our social services accounts payable. I didn't see anything.
I'll make a motion to approve the social service accounts payable.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion. It has been seconded. Are there any questions for Paul? Any discussion?
If I might add, Andrew and I have been discussing, um, how to get more information about, uh, the social services budget to you. This week I'll be, um, reviewing some cost analysis reports that we received in the state. This might allow us to have a conversation about how our budgets work so that we can provide you and the community greater, um, insight into what's actually occurring there, so. Hopefully in the next few months, we'll be having some more, um, presentations that, uh, will provide some of that education hopefully.
Thank you. All right. Any additional questions for Paul?
See flush with birds?
Yeah, it was fun. Yeah, good dog work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question after, but not really.
All right, hearing no further discussion, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries accounts payable.
I just, if I can put you on the spot for a second, um, I think it was in class and county committee meeting, we talked about, um, something, but I ain't going to get the word, the verbiage right, but, uh, some of your outstanding things with, with county attorney's office that we can, uh, recoup some.
Yes, there, there, there are some areas.
That relationship between the county's attorney's office and, and
Yes.
We had some discussion here in the board. I was trying to... We had some discussion here at the board. I was trying to paraphrase and.
Yes, and I'm not gonna speak for the county attorney or our office, but I'll share from our perspective. We do have, yes, we do have, we do have some areas of, of our collections that do require some county attorney time. And there is a percentage of reimbursement for those collections, you know, fraudulent accounts or overpayments, particularly in our income maintenance world, that we would be interested in working with the county attorney's office. And, and there may be some funding for attorney time through that process that would assist us and also hopefully benefit the county attorney as well. So really, it goes back to how we develop our cost rates and our cost profile for services that we offer. And when we look at cost effective accounting, having the county attorney's office bill us for the work that they do provide for us helps us in developing that rate. And, and I think where that really plays out is, is there's some mutual benefit for the county attorney's office because they may be able to use that to offset some of their costs for increased county attorney time. How that looks, we have to dive a little bit deeper into the dollars and cents to get real, real numbers for that, but I think that's an area of potential growth for us. We're focusing on that movement of our child support collections group into our accounting department to hopefully expand our collections in those areas. Actually, when we looked at our personnel committee conversation about increasing some of our clerical time, that is also intended to, to focus on those areas that I think we can start. If nothing else, reducing our colony costs by recouping these collections. So the county attorney's office does play a role in that. Is that, is that kind of what the conversation you were looking?
Yeah, I just want more for balanced information for us at the board because we were.
We were at the meeting, so.
Conversation.
Yeah.
Nobody else was, so I just wanted to.
Sure, yes, and, and I would be looking for the county attorney's office to take the lead on how we move forward with this.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Go be nice to somebody.
Yeah.
I'm gonna check off my list on things at this point. Thank you so much for your time.
Let us know if we got any brownie points or.
Well, you started off.
We're approved anyway, is that cool?
I wanna know when I got my one done.
Yeah, I know.
There is Barb. Good morning, Brad Lockton, the auditor. So the first item I have is the approval of the MOA, the memorandum of agreement with the university. And this comes to you every two or three years. This is going to be a three-year contract. This is the agreement with the university that we have their resources and experts and bring that to the communities that we live in through our four H program, our A professionals, master gardeners to snap in, Meeker in motion, just to name a few. The agreement will be providing the programs locally and employing the staff, and that's outlined in the MOA. And this is for, from January twenty twenty-two through December twenty twenty-four, so it's a three-year contract. And there's an addendum. The addendum is required by the university standards for the administrative support specialist person. In some counties, that person is a county employee, in others, it's a university, and therefore that's part of an addendum for that specialist and also any interns that we bring in throughout the year that are outlined in budget. What is different here was the negotiation primarily done with Danny's help for us to have a specialist in both crops, livestock, and horticulture. And so there'll be a three-way split among the counties of Meeker, McLeod, and Wright with our percentages slightly different. This is all budgeted in the twenty twenty-two budget. And so at this point, I would ask for the Commissioners to approve the agreement and the addendum for the university to provide extension programs for that three-year period.
Madam Chair, I make a move to approve the agreement between the University of Minnesota, Meeker County, providing extension programs locally and employing extension staff for a three-year period beginning January one twenty twenty-two and ending December thirty-first twenty-four.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second Madam Chair.
Any discussion? Questions for Barb on that? Hearing none? We'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is the county and hospital payables, which we want to.
Do you have a motion to approve the county and hospital payables, Madam Chair?
Do we hear a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, it has been seconded, is there any discussion?
Thank you for clearing up Maximus for me.
That was pretty easy. Thanks.
And we got the, the truck inspection off of your notes.
Okay, super. Phil was able to help you on that. Good. I'll direct you there.
I had a question, I was reading through, and when the county is responsible for burying someone, I know, I know we've kind of talked about this, or I've heard some discussion on this before. There, there was one funeral home that was being paid. Do they, does the family pick and choose which, which funeral home? Or does it rotate this, this ones, this time, and then we move on to another one, or?
That was a social service payable.
Social services payable.
I, I do think that it goes by, I could be wrong, we've had discussions about this in the past, Steve. I, I'm assuming if they live, they can go where, there's a budget they have to use. So there's some, you know, there's a format, and they qualify in how much they can spend. They can have a luncheon, they can have flowers, there's, there's a lot of things, so. But I think, Andrew, that it depends on the area they're in. Most, I noticed that one too, it wasn't a normal one, but that would have been a question for Paul, yeah.
I hadn't heard of it before, and I thought, oh, I wonder if they, if they use with outside Meeker County, or if they use the services.
That would, obviously.
I, I, I mean.
It has to be a resident of Meeker County, obviously.
Well, to clarify that, I think if, if, well, it's the word, if, I don't know if word of the state is the proper word, but they could, they could, Meeker could be their control county, but they could be living now if they've been in the system.
But, but they're being taken care of by Meeker County.
But they're, they're always gonna, it's always gonna revert back as this is their control county, so they could live outside the county. And, you know, over a course of years, they've moved, but they've always been in social services through Meeker, and then we would follow that piece to.
Is there a flat fee then?
It was like thirty-nine hundred.
Is that what Paul was talking about several months ago?
I know we adjusted that.
So I, I've, I've made an inquiry to Paul, and I will, I'll send an email to the full board when I have an answer.
There is, there is a, there's a budget, so, and I, and I'm not gonna quote it because I can't remember it. I did notice that seemed higher than normal, but we also readjusted it.
It was like three thousand or something.
I think.
The last time I buried a relative, it was thirteen thousand, so. It's pretty bare minimum stuff.
I don't know all the details of that payable, obviously, but I think the number is three thousand.
That's what I remember. Remember from when Paul discussed that a few months ago, I think someone brought burial up, it might have been.
I think I did.
You did, yeah. Like, how do we do it? How do you determine negotiations in terms of what you can do? Because there probably are possible cheaper routes out there if they're, you know, cremated.
I didn't know if the county contracted with one particular funeral home or.
That's what I, that's what I assume myself.
Yeah.
And it's possible in the payable that, you know, we, we paid thirty-nine hundred, but perhaps nine hundred, that was a reimbursement or something. I mean, the number doesn't necessarily reflect the actual.
But I think when we look at the payables, it looks like it's almost, you know, you'll see one from Houghland, then you'll see one coming out of Darwin, and yes, I think they move it.
I'm gonna guess they do, and, and, well, I, and I'm thinking the family has input, but we also have to have the funeral home agree, obviously.
Agree to do it for that price.
Because they're taking a lot less, I think, than they normally take. I don't think we can tell them, all the cremation society, I mean, I don't think we can do that. They have so much money they can use to go, so. But that would be a question for Bukovich.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll provide an answer when I have it.
Everyone just jumped out at me, and I thought, I don't know.
I saw that too, but.
And I think when Paul brought, a few months back, when I brought it up, there was like three in the payables.
Yeah, there was.
And then we go a long time without any. And then keep in mind that they go back and try to collect where they can, but these, I think, are people that just don't have anything, so.
But that was good to know too, because I know Sunshine Funeral Home's down by Redding Falls, it's in Echo, and your statement about if they started out here, that's where.
And it could be, I, I mean, I personally know of one that is, I know Meeker's, Amy is their social worker, and they, they have.
The term is fiscal host. Meeker County is the fiscal host for that part.
Yep, there's a term.
She was just waiting in the state.
What about if they leave the state?
That's it then.
Um, then I think they would have to transfer, th- then we would transfer them through the court system.
But that was something then, I had made a note of that through county hospital accounts payable, that's why I brought it up now. But that was through social services accounts payable.
Right.
I was flipping through everything.
Right.
Okay.
Those are always, almost always through social services.
I would.
That would make sense.
I would be interested in how that is thirty-nine hundred versus what we're supposed to kind of pay, how, where the difference comes from, or if it's, comes back in another way, or the, I don't know how that works, you know, in terms of that account.
It could be what they spent, the county gets billed, and then the nine hundred or something.
Reimbursed later.
I don't.
Perhaps Paul will answer that in the email so we can stay on time here.
We love the door to.
That was our one nice thing.
Okay, Julie, did you take the vote on the payables, and you had your question after that?
We need to vote.
We haven't voted on it yet.
We did the extension, the extension one, but we have not done the accounts payable. I believe we have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion in a second, yes.
So any additional discussion? That was my only question.
You might, you might say we had a spirited discussion about death.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other discussion?
Absolutely not.
Okay, we will take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for accounts payable.
Julie, I think you'll have to either do a break or take one of your other items that comes after break because we cannot start the public hearing until nine thirty, which time we connect with the outside people that are coming in, plus the public hearing starts.
Can we do the, can we set the public hearing for the county ditch seventeen and nineteen?
They're gonna, uh, kill me online for all of that, so I wish that we would just move out of the house at this time and just have him available.
We could do like committee updates.
Well, we can do Randy.
We can go to the county attorney.
We could do, sure, I'd like to go first.
Why don't we do, I'm gonna, I have a, the crime victim advocate is coming up for the budget, so let me. Um, we can start with the Assistant County Attorney. We had applications, reviewed them, had interviews, and moving forward with the request to hire an Assistant County Attorney pending a successful background as well as successful review. So I'd make a recommended motion to approve hiring of RJ Alpers as a full-time Assistant County Attorney pending that successful background check as well as successful references. He'd be starting at level C forty-five, step one, thirty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents per hour. He is an enthusiast, and actually, it kind of very reminds me of myself a little bit back when I was a little bit younger.
How much younger?
Not many, because I'm not that.
That is not a nice thing for me.
Did you mean to say that to get it approved?
Well, then.
Is he just reservation? Does he, does he come with any experience? Not that, I'm just curious, does he have some experience, or is he pretty fresh out of school?
He's been licensed for over a year and has been working as a judicial law clerk out of, and I think he was the Assistant Chief Judge of the Judicial District. So he comes with breadth of experience through child protection, criminal, civil commitments, I believe forfeitures. So he comes with the knowledge sitting from the bench, and so he's had the opportunity to witness a defense attorney styles, prosecutor styles, and he knows what makes a judge tick.
Good.
And I find that the judges appreciate a law clerk coming out and being green because they make the, and I wouldn't be, I'm not saying green, having experience with a judicial law clerk. Because the new attorneys tend to give the judges the information that they need to process. They're not just there to advocate for the state, but they're making sure that the judge has all the case law to review it and makes the argument almost in a brief form.
I'll move to approve the hiring of RJ Al, RJ Alpers as full-time Assistant County Attorney pending a successful background check, level C forty-five, step one, thirty-two sixty-seven an hour.
I'll second a motion, Madam Chair.
We have a motion, it's seconded, is there any additional discussion? Any questions?
So is this replacing that lady that just went to Crow River?
Crow Wing, yep.
Crow Wing, and then you have another one to replace again, and then another one would be the new one.
Correct.
Gotcha.
So I still need to fill two spots.
Sounds good.
Any additional questions? About the hiring? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Have you got another candidate hot off the press, or are you gonna have to re-advertise for the second? That was sad to see that you lost another one.
Right.
So soon.
Sterns County.
Strictly money?
I won't.
I'm not gonna, okay, that's fine. But do you have, out of that last pool, are you finding a second one?
We're, we're gonna continue to look, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and, and we'll continue to put out the application, or the request for applications to try to fill that contract position as well. The next item we have before the board is the grant agreement for the crime victim services, and today we have Angie Moss from our office.
You think I lost the whole bottom of that tray is gone? What happened to it?
Trying to get the, trying for me to lift some bars off her.
Mute it.
It's not you.
Okay, I'm muted. I'm muted. Okay.
You might wanna send out an instruction. Please mute, we don't care when you did your dishes last.
I can mute them, I don't know why they. Sorry about that.
I wanna start over again.
We'll try it. Sorry about that.
Start over, do over.
Angie Moss, crime victim advocate of our office, she's here to discuss the grant agreement that we have in place.
Yes, um, so every two years is a new grant cycle, and so we have to apply for the OGP grant again every two years. Um, and so I just recently successfully completed an application process, and we've been awarded the grant. It's a hundred and forty thousand dollars over the course of two years, so the grant should actually be from October first twenty twenty-one through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Roughly, well, not roughly, it is seventy thousand dollars each year. It's used to run the victim services office. So it's to advise everything from the paper that's needed to send brochures and letters to the victims. It pays the majority of my salary and just helps support the victim services for general crimes.
And the funds are channeled through the attorney's office.
Correct.
The attorney's office then disperses these funds.
It's, it's a reimbursement actually, so we pay the money upfront, and then every quarter, I submit our receipts and everything that we've spent, and then they reimburse us.
It's use it or lose it.
Has this, has this grant changed over the years, or has it always been about this amount or more or less, or?
Received it, we, we received an increase about four years ago, and so that's how we hired the assistant to the crime victim advocate. And because we couldn't supply, so we had tried to look at other ways of maybe covering more costs in our office, and we. And because we couldn't supplant, so we had tried to look at other ways of maybe covering more costs in our office, and we couldn't supplant. And so instead of returning the funds back to the state, we hired an assistant. And so that was before Angie had started with us. So it has gone up, and it's been, it's maintained its stability. The only difference now is that the, um, it, it requires a match, but because of COVID, they're not necessarily requiring the county to match the services. However, we've already budgeted for that. It's all in line, and so we're just gonna continue to keep it, um, flowing the same way, because in two years, it's gonna have to go back to the match, so, instead of messing with our budget. And it does pay for part of my salary as well, because I'm a supervisor of Angie, as well as I handle all the crime victim for the sexual abuse cases.
You do important work, so I appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
So I'm gonna make a motion to, um, approve the, uh, grant contact, contract agreement, and accept the hundred and forty thousand in grant funding from the Office of Justice Programs.
I'll second that motion.
You know, motion, it has been seconded, so any additional discussion?
I would like to add that not every county attorney's office applies for this grant, but every county attorney's office is able to receive the grant if they were to apply and successfully complete the application.
Good job.
We have to take the vote.
Okay.
So any additional discussion, questions? Hearing none, we will take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at, at this time, we could take a seven-minute break, or we could go into reports, but I would suggest we take a seven-minute break. Yes.
Take a break?
Okay, we will resume then at nine-thirty.
We're ready.
All right, well, welcome back, everyone. We took a little break here. We were having some technical issues, so we will resume now. But we recessed as the county board. We will convene as the county ditch authority at this time. And I believe, did Andrew, did you want to start, or did Barb want to start? Okay.
I believe we want to acknowledge that we have Ron Ringquist online, and we also have Kale online for the public hearing. And I believe Julie, you were open to public hearing for, um, the drainage ditch of County Ditch eighteen. And today we are hearing a petition for the use of eighteen as an outlet. So, um, Kale, do you want to go through the purpose of the hearing, or do you, would you like for Julie to read the script that she has provided?
Someone making copies?
Kale, can you, Kale, can you hear us? Oh.
My mic is on.
Where'd Kale go?
Kale, are you able to hear us?
I can hear you, Cory, but, um, we have a hard time hearing the chair and hearing Barb speak at that table.
Okay. Is this, is this better, Kale?
Uh, not quite yet. It's very, very faint.
My light is on here.
Primarily the WebEx is focusing on some background noise that on Ron, his windows highlighted.
Yeah, we're hearing some echoing background noise too, but should I just, shall I read the script and, and roll along, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
I would like to welcome everyone who has come this morning. The purpose of our meeting is to receive comments and testimony from all parties interested in the petition of Matthew and Darcy Johnson to use Meker County Ditch eighteen as an outlet for drainage of seventy-four acres in the east half of the southwest quarter of section twenty-seven, township one-seventeen, north range, thirty-one west in Meker County. The order of business for this hearing will be as follows. First, Mr. Van Brugen, the Drainage Authority's attorney, will explain the process which has brought us to this public hearing and the purpose of this hearing. Following Mr. Van Brugen, the Drainage Authority's county auditor, Barb Locke, will review the notice requirements. Following Ms. Locke, the petitioners will be given an opportunity to present their request. Following comments from the petitioners, reports from professional engineer Brent Johnson regarding, regarding the adequacy of County Ditch eighteen as an outlet, and from viewer Ron Ringquist recommending an outlet fee and benefits for the acres petitioned for use of County Ditch eighteen will be reviewed. Finally, we would like to hear the public's comments on the petition. If you would like to make a comment when the public comment period is open, please come up to the podium. When I recognize you, state your name and address for the record. If you have a specific question concerning the petition, we may ask our legal counsel or staff to respond. If you have anything in writing you wish to submit, you can provide it to me during the public comments. Would any of the board members wish to offer any further remarks before we begin? Any questions from the board? Okay, then I'll read on. The purpose of this hearing. Mr. Van Brugen, can you hear me? Kale?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Do any board members have questions for Kale?
Chair, Brettison, I just have some comments for the board about the purpose of the hearing.
Thank you.
We're proceeding today under Minnesota statute one-oh-three E point four-zero-one and primarily subdivision four. Uh, the board knows, and benefited landlords on the ditch should know via the notice they received, that the Drainage Authority was petitioned, seeking permission from the Drainage Authority to use County Ditch eighteen as an outlet for approximately seventy-four acres from two parcels that are in part benefited by this ditch system already, but the petitioners are seeking to outlet additional acres from those properties into the same drainage system. That statute says that a public hearing shall be held and notice to all benefited landlords on the ditch system. We've done that, and soon Barbara's gonna submit for the record the notice requirements that she sent out for today's hearing. The statute instructs that the board today is to consider the capacity of the outlet of the drainage system. And if the board determines after consideration of the capacity, that permission is to be given to use County Ditch eighteen as an outlet for these acres, then the board's task is to state by order the terms and conditions for use of County Ditch eighteen as an outlet, and to set the amount to be paid as an outlet fee. So in the record for the board today, you have a report from the petitioner's engineer at Bolton and Mink, Brent Johnson, discussing the adequacy of the outlet to serve as an outlet for the petitioned acres. You have, of course, the petition by the Johnsons. You have a report from Ron Ringquist, who's online, recommending an outlet fee and a benefit, should you grant the petition. And today you'll take public comments and any questions. And then on the agenda prepared for today, you'll see possible action is to either grant or deny the petition after consideration of the outlet. So, Madam Chair, if the board has any questions for me about the law or the procedure, now would be a good time for those questions. Otherwise, we can move on to Auditor Locke for submitting the notice requirements for the record.
Board members, do you have any questions?
I do not.
We'll move on then. Barb?
For the record, our office published in the Minnesota Independent Review, three successive weeks, September fifteenth, twenty-second, and twenty-ninth, the notice of hearing. We mailed to all landlords on September third, and we emailed all staff and county commissioners, along with Ron Ringquist, our viewer, and Bolton Mink, who was doing the report for the petitioner.
Questions for Barb? At this time? Hearing none from the board, we'll open it up to our petitioners. Would the petitioners like to present?
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Thank you for hearing my petition today.
And your name and address?
Matthew Johnson.
Matthew, uh-huh, thank you.
And, um, as Kale outlined, I, you know, I, we just asked that you review the report from Bolton and Mink that we had prepared, um, that states there's adequacy in County Ditch eighteen for the additional acres we want to outlet, use County Ditch eighteen as an outlet for. And I guess that's the, that's the main purpose of this meeting, and, um, I, I don't know if I have any other things to say. Do you have any, I don't know, any questions, or?
I have just one question, and that would be on the engineer Brent Johnson, just because your last name is Johnson. Are you related? Is there any conflict?
Not that I know of.
All right. Perfect, that was my.
I know of.
Minnesota, there's Johnsons all over.
All owners of the place.
Right, like I said.
Oh, yeah.
And no, we're not related either.
We got all conflicts of interest out of it. That's what, that was my question, so. I have nothing further.
Any other questions? Seventy-four acres is involved here with the addition of that to the ditch?
Yes, we already have, um, I think, really four acres benefited from this parcel to the ditch system. We just would like to have some additional acres added to the system. So we're kind of on the, on the order of the, of the, whenever they last drew the redetermination, where we had some included, but not everything we wanted, so. That's the purpose of our petition.
Very good.
Continue to stay there, so.
Sure. Are there any other petitioners, any other folks that would like to speak at this time?
In regards to the Bolton Mink report.
I reset what's back in there.
Can we have Kale or Matt review that, and we will put it on the screen, so that we can give the board highlights on some of the particular points in it?
Can we pull, pull the microphone a little bit closer? Barb, we can't hear what you're saying.
Sorry.
Thank you.
We have Bolton Mink's report on the screen, or we'll have it there shortly. Will you review just some highlights for the board, or allow for Matt to do that, being Bolton Mink was not going to be represented here?
Yes, I'm prepared to do that unless Matt wants to. I'll give him first chance, otherwise he can defer to me.
Yeah, go for it, Kale.
Okay, thank you, Matt. While that report is being pulled up, this was the report filed by petitioner's engineer Brent Johnson. Um, it's dated September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. It's part of the board packet. It was made also available for public inspection and is on the web. In this report, um, your inj, the petitioner's engineer has looked at the existing watershed for County Ditch eighteen and has compared the addition of these seventy-four acres to the existing watershed. And, um, has also looked at, if you scroll down and look at that table one, that's being displayed on screen right now. What the engineer has done is looked at the crossings at County Road thirty-five and Trunk Highway seven, and has compared what the existing culvert capacity in terms of CFS will be compared to what the design NRCS ditch flow is. Um, and essentially, what he's concluding here is that these culvert crossings, where the bottlenecks might be expected to be, if the ditch system is overcapacitated, um, are overdesigned with a greater efficiency than what NRCS would recommend. And the engineer has compared, um, how the addition of these seventy-four acres might change the performance of the ditch system at those crossings, and has concluded that, um, the performance is, is not gonna change, that those crossings will still meet the NRCS ditch flow, um, requirements, and that the efficiency is still greater than a hundred percent. Um, and that the engineer, you know, doesn't expect to see that any other properties who are benefited and pay, um, tax assessments for use of this ditch will feel the consequence of the addition of these seventy-four acres. So if you scroll down to the next page in the watershed boundary, you can see the request is to add seventy-four acres, which would, um, take the four thousand eight hundred and fifty-one acre watershed as exists today, and increase it to four thousand nine hundred and twenty-five acres. And then finally, if you scroll down to sections four and five, um, here is where the engineer is showing the change in efficiency of the culverts based on adding those seventy-four acres. And you can see in section five in the summary, um, the engineer has concluded that there's adequate capacity to add these seventy-four acres, and that County Ditch eighteen is adequate to handle this additional drainage. Does the board have any questions for my assessment of the engineer's report, or for the petitioners based on the engineer's report?
Hearing none.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Then I suggest we, uh, move on to Mr. Ringquist, and he can provide an overview of the recommendation he's giving to the board for the outlet fee and benefits, before we open the floor for public comments.
Goodness, Chairman, uh, I have looked at the historic value data for County Ditch number eighteen. It was originally constructed back in about nineteen oh-four. It wa, there was a redetermination of benefits that was completed in nineteen eighty-five. The recommendations that I am making are based on the redetermined benefits and the values applied to similar properties within the overall watershed. There currently is twenty-two hundred and fifty-nine acres benefited. There was a petition in two thousand eighteen, and the board granted additional forty acres to use it, ditch eighteen, as an outlet. So we are just looking at the addition of seventy-four acres. Not all acres within the watershed currently are considered to be benefiting. So what I've done with the acres to be added is matched those that, like I said, are benefiting similar properties. The outlet fee is based upon what their share of the drainage system would have cost, adjusted for inflation since its time of original construction, and then depreciated to reflect its current condition. So it is a adjusted value. That is a cash value based on current system replacement cost minus depreciation. The benefit value is similar to those that match the redetermination that was done in two thousand, uh, or nineteen eighty-five. And so the acres included, uh, will include the one acre and the three acres that were benefited during the nineteen eighty-five redetermination. And that would be benefits of eight hundred and thirty dollars for the eighty-acre parcel.
Okay, does the board have any comment or questions for Ron at this time? Hearing none. Anything else, Ron?
No, no, that, that would be my recommendations for the outlet fee and for the adjustment to the benefit to those two forty-acre parcels.
Okay. With that, we're ready to hear from members of the public who wish to comment. To accommodate each person in the room who may wish to provide public comments, each person may be limited to one opportunity to provide comments. Again, please state your name and address and identify your property as you begin your comments. Any? Yes, come, come forward.
Hi, my name is John Hoff. Um, two questions, one representing a landowner in the section to the mile and north. Um, to get access to County Ditch eighteen has to go through a private ditch system. If that private ditch system has been contacted, to allow the extra acres to come in there. is the one question. The second question is from the Cedar Mills Township Board, is will this require going through a township road? And is permission going to be asked of the township for that?
Very good. Who would like to address those questions, please?
Madam Chair, this is Kale. Let's have the petitioners come forward and, and, and answer those questions initially.
Okay, Matt?
Matt Johnson again, petitioner. It's, I understand that there is a process to request permission to work in the right-of-way of Cedar Mills Township, that's one of their policies. So before any work would be done, we would request it, or ask Cedar Mills Township for that permit to work in the road right-of-way to, to do that. As far as outletting in the private ditch system, it's my belief that Meeker County allows people to drain into the public right-of-way, into a public, into a ditch that's at the public ditch. And so where this private ditch is located is right in the public right-of-way. And so outletting in the, in the public ditch, in the public road right-of-way would be allowed under the Meeker County ordinances, from my understanding.
I'm not sure on that one. When it comes to the township road, is there that kind of stuff?
It would be public property or private property?
I'm looking to, to want to read.
Sure, sure.
Phil Schmals, Public Works Director. I, I guess my comment about road easements would be that they're easements. I don't know, I think this is a township road we're talking about where the drainage is adjacent to. Typically, they would not have an in-fee property ownership. It'd be an easement over part of that property for transportation. I don't know that that would specifically allow for drainage outlets.
What would be the next step necessary, then, to look into that?
Madam Chair, I can comment on this, but maybe first ask a question of petitioners. Are you planning on doing physical work in the right-of-way or just directing the water into the right-of-way?
We'd have to, Matt Johnson again. We'd have to, we'd have to do some physical work in the right-of-way.
Then, just for the board's information, under Minnesota statutes, Chapter 160, there are statutory rights to connect drainage from private property into public road right-of-way. They allow the road authority to set permit conditions if the road authority certainly wishes, but it gives landowners a statutory right to connect private drainage through, along, and across public roadway right-of-way. So if, if physical work is being done in the right-of-way, it would be incumbent on the petitioners or the people doing the work to get that permission from the township. That would be the road authority that would control that and not the drainage authority. So that would be a, a separate proceeding outside of this proceeding.
So we need to instruct Matt to contact the township and address this with them?
If the board wishes, it could certainly include that in its order if it liked.
I got, Kale, Steve Schmidt, I just would, so would this be something that we could approve upon conditions of approval from Cedar Mills Township?
The board could do a conditional order. It could continue the hearing and, and wait until there's permission evidence, or it could instruct petitioners to get that, that permission. I think it would be a good idea if you go that route to make it a condition. I assume petitioners, if they can't get the right-of-way permission they need, then wouldn't want to be assessed benefits. And if that's the case, then a conditional order would make sense.
Did that answer your question?
The township, I guess.
All right, so, John, that, your, were your two questions? Then one about, it was private property or public property?
Can we come back up there?
Sure, sure.
All right, John Hoff. The question was brought to me about the landowner that I rent land from is that we've had water brought into the watershed for the private ditch in the past without permission being given or the acres being added to the ditch system. And if we're doing that again, it's just, it's not that we're against it, but proper procedures should get permission from all the landlords as part of the private ditch to bring acres into the private ditch. And so that was their question and concern. So not, not a, you know, not going to let you do it, but the proper procedure is what they'd like to be followed on that end of private. Whether this board has anything over that, I don't know, but that's the concern they want me to bring.
Okay, is that where you were addressing the easement concept, Phil?
Yeah, mainly what I was saying is.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Maybe to clarify what I was saying is the road easement doesn't give a property owner that is not adjacent to the road the right to drain across that private property to get to the road. That's my understanding of drainage in public right-of-way. If you're the underlying fee owner adjacent to the road, including that private ditch, I would say yes, then you have access. But if you have to travel through private property to get there, you'd have to work with private property order.
Okay. Matt?
I guess I'd reference, in my petition, I, I do have a conveyed easement to cross the neighbor's property. So that easement's been conveyed and recorded in the recorder's office to cross the property.
Very good, okay.
And just for my information, maybe, sit there, Matt. The tiles going to outlet in a private ditch or public ditch? I mean, that.
I don't, I, the way I understand it is there's a private ditch connected to the public ditch. It's all part of the wa, public, wa, county ditch 18 system. As far as the benefited acres.
So is, is the, the private portion upstream from the outlet? I mean, where are downstream?
Upstream.
Upstream. And you're just want to make sure that the impacts of adding water acres to the system is not going to impact.
And, and the, the acres are supposed to be in there. Permission, so that when it comes time to clean the ditch, all parties can pay. Sorry, do you want me to repeat that?
Sure.
Yeah.
So just to make sure that all the acres that are draining into the private ditch are, as you know, say, have the permission, so that when it comes time for cleaning the ditch, all the correct acres can be assessed for the cleaning of the ditch.
Okay.
Kale or Ron, is that all, are, are those issues addressed in this information in front of us? Do you feel?
Matt, do you have a map or something showing the connection between your property and the public ditch? Based on your testimony, it sounds like you're intending on doing drainage work in roadway right-of-way, and that, that either connects directly to the public ditch or eventually daylights, and then that connects to the public ditch. Can you describe, at least describe the connection path between your property and the public ditch? So we know what's between the two?
Yes, I would, I would be outletting into the public road in the right, right-of-way in the road. That water would then run into a private ditch and flow north and into County Ditch 18, the formal part of County Ditch 18 that's on the map here. But it would, it would outlet in the public right-of-way in the road ditch. And then it would run to the private ditch, which is the private ditch in the public roadway, right-of-way.
Thank you, Matthew. So what the board needs to be aware of is that in Minnesota statute, Chapter 160.20, there is statutory authority that allows any land that runs to a roadway, the landowner shall have the right to enter upon the highway for purposes of connecting a drain or ditch with any drain or ditch constructed along or across the highway. But before making the connection, shall first obtain a written permit for the connection from the road authority having jurisdiction. So for the connection the petitioner plans to do, he has a statutory right to make that connection once obtaining permit with or without conditions as determined by the road authority. So the board could include that in its order. In regards to the water that flows out of the road right-of-way into the private ditch, whether or not that creates any liability concerns would be handled by the reasonable use doctrine. But there's no lot, to my knowledge, that would say the petitioners have to get permission from the landowners of that private ditch. The landowners would have, any dispute that arose between neighbors over that would be settled by the reasonable use doctrine that governs property rights and drainage neighbor to neighbor. That would, again, be something outside of this proceeding, but it wouldn't be something the drainage authority would have any jurisdiction over.
Is this 74 acres of agriculture land that's now being tiled? And this is what's going in, the reason for this? Or what had happened to these 74 acres drainage before this time?
We, that's a good question. We purchased this properly, property nearly four years ago. Before we, before we closed on it, we had a drainage feasibility study completed. And they recommended we take the drainage water to the west to County Ditch 18. And so this is kind of a, been, for me, been a multi-year process to kind of keep this going. And that, they determined that was our best outlet for this farm. And that's why I'm petitioning to have this.
It's agriculture land that's being tiled and you're looking to, I see.
And these acres, Ron, will be included in the, in the, as a benefited portion? So he will be assessed on ditch cleaning, anything in the future? I mean, John, I see John and Barb here. That's correct. I mean, so, so I think that answers. Sort of, okay. I'm just trying to make sure that all the boxes are checked here.
Question? Yep.
Laura Allen Schmeling, Cedar Mills Township. Question I'd have is where did this water go before? We're redirecting where the water's going. Where was it going before?
I don't suppose it was tiled before. Was it just natural flow or?
Yeah, there's got to be a natural flow. It's got to go somewhere.
I wonder. Okay, Matt?
To best of my knowledge, the water ends up in the Gulf of Mexico. Mississippi River, Crow River, I mean, it's all, it's all flowing downhill. I, I know we have some of these acres were already benefited to the ditch system, so some of those acres already were going that way.
And they were not being, you just only had four documented since 1985, but there was more acres of the 74.
I don't know.
I mean, in your estimation.
We purchased this, this farm, and I, I don't know exactly how many of those acres.
Okay.
It would be hard for me to know.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yes, it all eventually gets to the Crow River, whether it's through County Ditch 18 or through another, over, you know, over land, over land.
Has this always been agriculture land? It's always been farmed? Okay.
As far as I know.
Could Kale restate that condition again? I'd like to hear that.
Kale? Yeah, we have a question here from Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, was it to restate the statute I'd cited about using the right-of-way?
No, the condition that you would be recommending.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. So the condition I would recommend would be that, originally, I'd say, I had said I recommend that this order, if granted, be conditioned on getting permission from the road authority to do work in the right-of-way. And I guess we would ask Matt to clarify. I think the first time he said, yes, we would do work in the right-of-way. I think the second time said would just outlet water in the right-of-way. If the petitioners are planning on doing physical work, like installing tile or digging ditches in the right-of-way to connect the drain, then a condition would be appropriate saying this is conditioned on getting that permission from the road authority. If they're just outletting at the highway boundary, then that condition is likely not necessary.
Who is the road authority? It would be the township?
The township road, as I understand.
Yeah.
Yes, we would be doing work in the, in the road right-of-way. I, I'm very familiar working with Cedar Mills Township. I've successfully applied for permits at least on three or four other occasions. So it's a, it's a, it's a normal thing that I'm used to working with, and it would be something I would plan on doing with. But I didn't, I didn't want to get a permit until if I couldn't ever outlet, use the ditch system to outlet. So I'm just trying to kind of work these in logical steps.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you, Matt. So based on that, Commissioner Johnson, my recommendation, when the board is ready, if they, if they do decide to approve this petition, would be that you just add that condition, that it's conditioned on receipt. Then if that permit is not received or is abandoned, these acres wouldn't be assessed then until that condition's satisfied.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Or if there are any written materials to present to the board at this time? No? Mr. Hoff? If this is amended to include road authority through Cedar Mills Township, would that be something that you would agree to, be comfortable with? Okay. Any other questions or comments at this time? If there's no further testimony, then we'll close the public comment portion. Okay, Kale, would you like to assist in any additional discussion? Give us some guidance?
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. I did, like I do at all drainage proceedings, to try to be as cost-effective and as efficient as possible, prepared some draft findings in an order granting the petition. If the board likes, I am prepared and can walk through those draft findings. It's based on information that was available to the board prior, and the public prior to today. If the board is comfortable, though, I, my recommendation, I think, would be to allow staff an opportunity to amend these draft findings so that we can incorporate the, the relevant comments that were raised today in an appropriate response to them. And if the board is okay with that, then my recommendation would be for the board now to have some discussion about the petition and about the evidence, and then to either make a motion, either granting or denying the petition based on the evidence that heard today after considering capacity. And then continuing the hearing to, and Barb can help us with the date, but continuing the hearing until a date when the board could take up and review my draft findings in order that I would like to amend to include those comments that were made today. So does the board have questions for me or, or any discussion or input about the petition and the evidence received?
I guess it would be easier to continue the meeting because then we would actually have it on paper. Well, I've got it up here. But with his changes, I agree.
So, so Kale, we did put up on the screen for everyone the area to show them from Bolton Mink's draft where the area is that we're working with. So is it your desire, then, to go through the draft at this point? Or is it your desire, then, to move this possibly to October 19th at 9:00 a.m. and review what would be the final rather than the draft?
My preference would be to move it to October, continue it to October 19th. And in that motion, give, get guidance from the board about whether it's directing staff to grant or deny the petition in those findings in order. And then what the board would do would be, on the 19th, it would just simply review the draft findings in order, and then either approve them as presented or with any further amendments at that time the board sees fit. But they were relevant comments today, and I, and I do think they deserve to be documented and responded to in these draft findings in order rather than just what our typical practice would be, just to note that there was an opportunity for public comments. I think when substantive public comments are raised, it's best to include them in the order and a response.
And the township, Cedar Mills, would be contacted and addressed before our October 19th meeting?
I think some guidance from the petitioners about if they know when they plan to have that completed. If they. that completed, if they have the permit in place before the nineteenth, then we could reference that in these findings. Otherwise, we could certainly, on the nineteenth, still include that as a condition.
I believe the Cedar Mills Township Board would not be meeting and have enough time to respond by the nineteenth. So, Kale, we'll go by your recommendation, whether October nineteenth is the best date, or whether we should put the condition.
If we put the condition on, is it enough to us, is it to check whether he does it? I mean, I'm assuming Matt will take care of it. I'm just trying to find a way to move this along.
Correct, exactly. Kale, can we move it on?
It's a good question. I think in my recommendation for the order, I would put that as a condition, with an instruction to the petitioners to file that permit with the Drainage Authority, so that we knew the condition was met, and that the auditor's office would then know it, could go ahead and add those benefits to the benefits list.
So, at this time, your recommendation, instead of the recommended motion I provided, was for them to continue this proceeding to October nineteenth, at which time the findings in order will be amended?
Yes, and we want to include a time of that motion, we also want the motion to include direction as to whether the board's wish is to grant or deny the petition.
So, we've chosen nine AM on October nineteenth, so the two commissioners would like to make that motion as he's recommending?
So, we have two options. We can accept the recommendation to postpone this until the nineteenth, or we could act upon this request with amendments. Am I correct in that? We have two options.
Madam Chair, what I'm, what I'm recommending is that the board, based on the evidence received today, have a discussion and make a decision on whether they find the drainage system has adequate capacity. And if you believe the County Ditch eighteen has adequate capacity, then the motion would be to continue the hearing until October nineteenth at, is it nine AM or nine thirty, Barb?
Nine AM.
At nine AM, and direct staff to prepare draft findings in an order granting the petition.
What would the board like to do?
I move to continue the meeting to October nineteenth, at which time we will have draft findings, and.
I got a question, Kale. If we're gonna delay to October nineteenth, and Cedar Mills doesn't meet anyway, what's the point of delaying to October nineteenth? Because we still won't have any resolution.
That's an excellent question. My recommendation is that we continue it to a date in time certain. This meeting has been noticed under the statutory requirements. If we continue indefinitely, then we do have to renotice under the statute. Whereas if we can announce today the date and time of the continued hearing, then we do not have to do the published and mailed notice, again, under statute.
And, and Kale, the purpose of having to go to the next meeting is to allow you to draft the, the comments into the findings, and as well as the condition regarding the permit from Cedar Mills Township, correct?
That is correct.
So, I'm confused. All we're doing is continuing it to rewrite the recommended motion. If we're accepting the findings of order here, which I accept that, we're adding a condition on. Does that mean, does that mean that he has to have the meeting with the township before we? No, that's what I thought, so.
Commissioner, the reason I'm looking for guidance on the decision on the petition is, I, you know, if we continue this to the nineteenth, I want to show up with draft findings that are, that are as close as possible to what the board might approve. And so, I would like the motion to contain, you know, direction as to the petition being drafted or denied.
And, and so, to be, to be clear, there's two questions in front of you right now. The first, and the most pressing, is should the, or should the petition be approved or denied? And then the second is, should we continue the discussion to the nineteenth to allow Kale to have the time to update the, the draft findings with the discussion that occurred today? But by answering the first question, it allows him to draft it as approve or denied.
So, we could entertain the motion to approve, but come back in two weeks with the typed-up motion and all the information worded.
Madam Chair, you could do that as two motions, or, or as one.
So, your motion was right, I think.
So, the only thing I didn't finish was that the motion to approve the petition in front of us, along with continuing this meeting to the nineteenth.
Would you like to make that motion, Paul?
I just did.
Very good. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
All right. Do we need to have it read to us, Corey?
Again?
Okay, Commissioner Johnson's motion was to move this public hearing to October nineteenth at nine AM, to allow staff to amend the draft findings in order to include today's comments, with the intent to move toward approval of the petition.
It wasn't to move the hearing, it was to continue the discussion, wasn't it?
Continue the hearing.
Continue the hearing.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure.
Otherwise, we have to republish.
Yep.
Yeah.
Does this motion include approval of the issue?
Yes.
Facts on findings, yes.
Okay.
Findings in order.
So, that, that will be worded within the motion. Do I hear a second?
Still second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? We'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. So, we will hear again on the nineteenth, which is two weeks from today.
We just continued this procedure on the nineteenth.
Correct. So, moving on to the next item that we have before you, and we still have these two gentlemen accompanying us on the video format, the petition for removal, and this is a continuation of a hearing that we had earlier, for property on County Ditch thirty-five. So, Mr. Herzog had made a petition to have his property removed, and we are providing data to likely deny that particular petition. So, Chairman Brunson, you have before you a script that we have provided to guide us through this process.
Okay. Here we go. I would like to welcome everyone who has come this morning. The purpose of our meeting is to review the draft findings in order prepared by our legal counsel following the motion to deny the petition of Bert Herzog and Sharon Pingree to remove benefited property from County Ditch thirty-five drainage system, passed at the board's August third, twenty-twenty-one, public hearing on this matter. The order of business for this hearing will be as follows. First, Mr. Van Brugan, the Drainage Authority's attorney, will review a report copied to the Meeker County Auditor by viewer Ron Ringquist. Following the review of Mr. Ringquist's report, the Drainage Authority's counsel, Kale Van Brugan, will review draft findings in an order denying the petition for removal of property. Would any of the board members wish to offer any further remarks before we begin? I have one. I would ask to amend this particular agenda to include, all right, on the last page here, we have the actual agenda for this ditch discussion. I would like to include a fourth number on the agenda to include discussion of cost, of how this, of how this petition will go, and provide direction on assessment, how that will be paid for. I would like to amend this agenda with that addition. Kale, would you like to, to comment on that, or should we take the vote to amend the agenda?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. I think that in the proposed draft findings in order that we reviewed for today, the paragraph two of the order addresses a recommendation from me on how to treat drainage system costs. So, I, I think that, I'm glad you pointed out that it's not specifically on the agenda, but it is included as the agenda item, draft findings in order, and the board will be discussing that before it makes its final motion on the draft findings in order I prepared. So, my take is it's already included in the agenda the board has before it. If you just go down one more page to page six, you'll see it as paragraph two.
Should we?
Oh, it appears what's on, showing on screen is missing page.
We're, we're missing some pages on the, in the packet.
Should, should we make it official to have it in the records and amend the agenda before we proceed to include this on our agenda for today?
That is fine.
Okay. I would like to move that we amend the agenda by including the discussion of how the bill will be paid. Could I hear a second on that?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion about the inclusion to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment has, an amendment to the agenda passed. Who would like to move us forward here, then?
Madam Chair, this is Kale, just some introductory comments. The board noticed and held its hearing on this petition on October fifth at nine thirty. And just to remind the board, at the conclusion of that public hearing, and after there was an opportunity for all public comments to be made, the board's motion was to continue the public hearing until today's date at nine thirty AM, and to allow Drainage Authority staff time to develop draft findings in an order denying the petition. That motion was seconded, and then that motion was carried. So, the purpose of today's continued public hearing is to review the draft findings in order that you instructed staff to prepare. Following that initial public hearing, petitioner Herzog did appear on August seventeenth, and provided some comments during the open-mic portion of that meeting. And then also, following that, petitioner Herzog did work with Ron Ringquist to look at whether his property benefits. Mr. Ringquist did take a look at that, and did send a letter dated September twenty-second to petitioner Herzog after his review. That letter was not in petitioner Herzog's favor, it was in support of denying the petitioner's petition. And so, maybe before we review the draft findings in order, Mr. Ringquist is still online, and if the board would like, he could certainly comment on his September twenty-second letter.
Ron, would you like to make a comment?
I, I, I will try to make a comment, Madam Chairman. Mr. Herzog did contact me, he asked me if I would look at the parcels, and if it appeared to me that the property was not draining into ditch number thirty-five, that I not spend any, any extra time or money, any, develop any extra cost. So, I drafted the letter after reviewing the GIS and the LiDAR data, and sent him a copy of my comments, sent him my comments, and then sent a copy on to Barb with the map indicating that a portion of my property does drain in a different direction, but that the majority of it drains physically towards ditch thirty-five. I did not address whether or not there were benefits, only that it appeared that it was not removed from the original water shooter, or that it did not drain into ditch number thirty-five. I commented that if he felt that it all disappeared into groundwater, or that he had built a obstruction that stopped the water from getting that way, that he would have to get someone, an engineer or someone, to certify that that was the case, because it was beyond my qualifications. Since I mailed the letter, I have heard nothing back from him.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, unless the board has questions for Ron, next on the agenda, I do have the draft findings in order I prepared under the board's instructions at its initial hearing. And if you and the board are ready, I'm prepared to go through them, if that's what your wish is at this time.
Madam Chair, I'll make one quick comment. I did look on the benefits list from the last redetermination, and on the fifty-four acres on the parcel, only forty-eight acres actually benefit from it. So, there are approximately six acres that are included on that as well. So, some of that portion that Ron is talking about isn't even included on the benefits list for Mr. Herzog.
One additional comment we haven't heard from Mr. Herzog, I know that he had some issues with today's continued hearing. However, I left him a message, and he did not return a response on whether he would be attending, or wish for us to move this to another day. So, I think at this point, with Ron's recommendation, and with Kale's expertise, we should move forward.
Can I, just one question of either Kale, or John, or Barb. So, in what you're seeing, the eighty-one, twenty-seven, thirty, or three-point-seven-six percent of the entire system, you feel that is a fair representation?
I believe so. I believe so, and looking further out from his property, you know, Ron's saying, you know, some potentially close to the north, that eventually leads to a private ditch and goes into County Ditch thirty-five.
Okay.
So, even like doing a potential redetermination, I don't think there would be a substantial change. You know, it might be a little bit, but I don't think it would be substantial.
And it could work less in his favor. I mean, that's.
It could go one way or the other.
Yes, okay.
We did hear from one of the neighboring landowners at the public hearing, and that individual that with me last week could not be here today, and I indicate that our recommendation was going to be to deny. Had I recommended something else, I believe she would have been here to appeal or to further comment, because they greatly feel that this property should not be removed. Also, a conversation with that individual as we get a little further into the process is Kale's recommendation that we likely share costs, because Kale and staff have been defending the ditch system, as well as Mr. Herzog's petition, and I've provided that information to the commissioners, and I hope that Kale will address that when he goes through his findings here with regard to the costs. So, those were the additional comments that John and I had. I believe, Kale, you're up.
Thanks. Madam Chair, as you wish, that I proceed to review these draft findings in order?
Please. Yep.
Excellent, thank you. So, these draft findings in order were in the board packet. I can see on screen previously that page six did not make it onto your screen, but fortunately, there's just one paragraph there, so I can read that to the board as we get there.
And we've got it in there now, Kale.
They do, great, excellent, thanks, Andrew. These draft findings in order were prepared based on information available to the board leading up to and including at the initial public hearing, also at the open-mic comments that Mr. Herzog made, and then the letter the Drainage Authority staff received from Ron Ringquist, in response to the inquiry from Mr. Herzog. So, in these draft findings, I just note, in these initial, page one here, that the Meeker County Board is the Drainage Authority. It received a removal petition, and in paragraph two, I include the legal description as it was included on the removal petition. In paragraph three, I note that under Minnesota Statute, section one oh-three E, point eight oh-five subdivision one, that law allows for, after construction of a drainage system, an owner of benefited property to petition the Drainage Authority for removal, and that states that the removal petition was in proper form and legally sufficient and adequate for these proceedings. Scrolling down to page two, in paragraph five, I provided a summary of what was alleged in the removal petition, and that is just copied and pasted directly over from the removal petition itself, so I won't go through those sub-paragraphs A through E. Below that, I note that on June first, the board set a hearing date for August third, twenty-twenty-one, at nine thirty, and directed your county auditor to give notice by mail, and in, either in the newspaper, or by publication on the website. And that also, the Drainage Authority directed its legal counsel to send the petitioners a letter notifying them that the costs of the proceedings may be charged to them, and that if they fail to file objective evidence, that the removal petition may be dismissed for failure of petitioners to demonstrate the three statutory findings that are required in one oh-three E, point eight oh-five subdivision three B. And in that letter, we provided that to petitioners. I note that in paragraph eight- Um, I note that in paragraph eight, that we sent that letter out um, noting them that they may be liable and we have evidence in the record showing that petitioners received that letter on June ninth of two thousand twenty-one. A public hearing was then held on August third. And scrolling down to page three, we note that petitioners provided an opportunity to present evidence at that public hearing, but they did not file any evidence with the drainage authority before that public hearing or during that public hearing. Um, I note in paragraph eleven, John Condon's remarks at that public hearing um, showing that waters from petitioner's property had, um, oh, excuse me, during the public hearing, that no information had been received by the drainage authority showing that any waters had been diverted from the drainage system or that property or that any changes to the property were made that would make it not able to significantly or regularly use the drainage system as an outlet. Um, I note that during the public comment portion, the chair asked for comments from the public as to whether those statutory criteria were met. And then paragraph three included the three comments that were given at the hearing. A commenter Kurt Anderson, um, commenter Deb Gabrielson, and commenter David Schreber, um, all of them raising comments, um, either neutral or against granting the petition itself. Then going into page three and four, I provided a summary of the comment from Mr. Herzog um, about his position and the things that he alleged during the public comment portion. Um, in paragraph fifteen, I just note that the drainage authority staff um, provided that the watershed maps that we have on file show that this property does drain to county ditch thirty-five and that the elevation of the ditch is lower in elevation than the benefited acres on petitioner's property. Um, I note in paragraph sixteen, that the existing records on file show that petitioner's property had a most recent benefits determination of just over eight thousand dollars, which represented three point seven-six percent of benefits. And a finding in paragraph seventeen, that the board finds that the testimony of petitioners um, is contradicted by the comments raised by Anderson, Gabrielson, and Schreber at the public comment portion of the hearing. Then following the public comment portion of the hearing, the board moved to continue the hearing to today and to allow drainage authority staff time to deny the petition through these draft findings in order. Um, I then in paragraph nineteen, just included a summary of the comments that Mr. Herzog made during the open mic portion of the hearing on August seventeenth. Going down into page five, um, I note Mr. Ringquist's letter that the drainage authority staff was copied on, which you just heard comments on. Um, in paragraph twenty-one, I note that under the drainage code one oh three E point three one five subdivision five A, an assessment of benefits to any property within the watershed of the drainage system which is or could be improved through construction of additional public or private drainage systems is allowed. Um, in paragraph twenty-two, I just note petitioner's property is being farmed and according to contour maps provided by drainage authority staff, that the land is higher in elevation than county ditch thirty-five. Therefore, the farming practices on petitioner's property increase sedimentation or accelerate water towards county ditch thirty-five. I note that it's the petitioner's burden to demonstrate that the three criteria found in the removal statute have been met and that the drainage authority finds petitioners have not demonstrated that the waters from their property have been diverted from county ditch thirty-five or that their property could not significantly or regularly use county ditch thirty-five. Um, I note that no evidence was offered at the public hearing, which would lead the drainage authority to approve the petition. And then finally, I just note that the drainage authority finds it would be unfair or inequitable to assess the cost for covering these proceedings to the county ditch thirty-five drainage system as petitioners have made their request for their sole benefit and have not provided the drainage authority evidence or justification in support of their petition. And then that leads us to the order. The order is, is two paragraphs. Paragraph one would be that the removal petition, which will attach as exhibit A, be denied. That supports the board's motion at the initial public hearing. And then as presented, paragraph two of the order recommends that the county auditor send a statement to the petitioner of all costs incurred in conducting these proceedings and that if that statement is not paid, that the auditor enter that statement on the tax list for the year and the statement cost shall be due and payable as part as regular real estate taxes. Um, the board may want to, as it discusses these draft findings in order as presented, talk about whether it wants to adopt them as recommended by me, which would charge all the costs to petitioners or if the board wants to um, split that cost or, or assess any portion or all of the costs to the drainage authority's system. The board has discretion in which way it goes. Um, the, the costs incurred in this process are necessary under the drainage code because of the petition. Um, but there are also costs that were incurred to protect other benefited landowners on the system. So I think, um, assessing all the costs to the petitioners, all the costs to the system or splitting the costs um, is supported under law and within the board's discretion. On screen, you'll see um, costs incurred from legal fees as well as um, postage for mailing the notice of the initial public hearing. With that, Madam Chair, now would be a good time for the board to ask questions or discuss these draft findings in order. But ultimately, we're looking for a motion to approve the draft findings either as presented or with modifications. And then any final motion to be done on a roll call vote.
Has Mr. Herzog paid any portion of the fees up to this point?
The answer would be no.
No.
As a, and matter of fact, he might not even know the toll that has been incurred.
Madam Chair, this is Ron Ringquist. I, I did submit the, the bill for my time to Mr. Herzog and have not received a payment yet, so.
Was that included in this list? Okay, so Ron's fees have not been included in this thirty-nine ninety-four oh five.
No ma'am, they have not. I did not submit a bill to the county because I felt I was working for Mr. Herzog.
Would that be a portion that he would be responsible for?
He, he had to find an individual to support his um, petition. He hired Ron for directly. So that should not be a cost coming back to the county.
Okay.
It should be his. And in defense of Mr. Herzog, he does not know the toll at this point unless he happened to find the board packet simply because we had accumulated this, we have had no correspondence or connection with him. And also, he was upset to start with that we had brought on an attorney and because of the delay numerous times that we had to go back and redo, this is extended. He did not choose to withdraw the petition, which he could have at some point. So this is the cost that we have incurred, thirty-nine ninety-four, that does not include staff time. This is purely uh, physical costs, uh, postage and attorney fees.
So really, our question is, do we want any part of the four thousand dollars, I'm rounding that figure, to be assessed to all of the people on there for protection of their rights? Or do we want the whole four thousand to the petitioner? Am I correct in saying that?
That is correct. And in speaking with one of the um, individuals that spoke at the public hearing, they were in favor of some costs to incur some costs for protection. That is certainly up to the board.
Uh, do we have anything written down, what the ditch authority should be paying? So when people do petition, they do have a understanding of what costs could occur to either deter them or say, well, I feel like this will be beneficial to them.
We share past practice occasionally. Um, I will share, you know, costs that have been incurred. This one is larger than I think we've incurred in some time, but I will share past practice. And upon them giving us the petition, that is one of the first statements we make, that when you apply and you are denied, the costs are assessed to you.
That is in our language.
Tell them that, and it's, I believe it's part of our uh, policy as well. I never looked at the details.
It was in the letter too, that was sent to him from Rinkinewen and prior to that first hearing is, that was part of it.
So past practice has been, all costs encumbered by the petitioner are paid by the petitioner, past practice. But it is up to the board, we can make a change in that past practice. Okay.
Part of me says, yeah, the benefits they want to protect and maybe have a cost to that. Part of me says they didn't bring this forward. They didn't initiate any part of it whatsoever. So why should they have to endure any costs? That's my feeling.
And my point was, if we have it in our literature saying what the petitioner has, what financial responsibility he could have in the, in whatever, when they decide to petition, that should be enough to say, okay. You're, you're taking on the costs and I don't know what the costs are gonna be, but that is your responsibility. As long as that is in our language, you know, I'm pretty firm behind it, that, that we keep it that way.
So the, the paragraph that John is alluding to is, please be advised that the cost of hiring a viewer and to prepare evidence to aid you in the August third hearing will be at your own expense. The county will not reimburse you for these costs. In addition, the county may charge or assess you for all or part of the costs for conducting the proceedings required on your Minnesota statute, section one oh three E eight oh five, to consider and make a decision on your petition. So that was in the certified letter that Cale alluded, that we have evidence that he has in hand.
Where is the paragraph, or maybe Cale can, can read this. I read where he was including the, the rest of the people on the ditch would be benefiting from this procedure so that they could be assessed a portion of this. Where, where was it? You had it so well worded, Cale.
Yeah, Commissioner Bredesen, that was in my, I emailed to auditor Locke um, asking me the legal question of what is the authority, the drainage authority has for, for how to determine these costs? And I said that by um, reviewing this petition and denying it in recognition that this property benefits, that requires this property to pay its fair share of future assessments. And in doing so, it's protecting the other benefited landowners on the system from carrying and the burden that someone else who benefits would not be paying if the property was removed. And so there is a justification for the protection to the integrity of the benefits on the system as a whole for the board to assess some of these costs to the system if it wishes.
Yep.
You have that language in front of you on the backside of the amended agenda, just so you have the wording.
Okay.
That's that I gave you.
Shouldn't that be part of our language then? If that, why, I mean, if our language suggests this is petitioner's cost and Cale is saying there should be some defense, then why isn't it in our language previously to this?
Uh, Commissioner and Madam Chair, the reason is because my recommendation is that this be a petitioner cost. It's, it's part of your policy, putting people on notice that it's that way. It was sent to the petitioners um, in a letter. Uh, but should the board wonder and be looking for justification to, to split the costs or portion it separately, I want the board to be aware that the justification is there. But you're equally supported charging it all to petitioners, charging it all to the system or, or dividing the baby, so to speak, between the two options.
And we are supported on that, Cale, by state statute, right?
And case law, correct.
I mean, I get all that, it's just going forward. You have to do, do the same precedent we set today. So if we decide, okay, we're gonna split costs, then we have to split costs going forward each and every time. And it should be in the language in terms of how the petitioner goes forward and say, you know, so he can weigh out, so it's fair to him too.
Uh, to add to that, I think it's um, it was spelled out quite clearly in the letter to him and I have a hard time. It basically by sharing the cost, now we're back in, backpedaling on the letter that we sent him in the first place, which then weakens our position moving forward. Anybody else that comes wants to bring a, a petition of this nature, which, I know I commented both times that he was in front of us. So I think I gave him fairly good direction, what my opinion was, um, whether that carried any merit at that time or not. But I do have a hard time passing any share of this on to additional landowners who, um, yes, I understand the findings of this, facts of this petition, um, somewhat protect them from future uh, assessments. But uh, the petition in itself is costing the money. So I, it's, it's hard for me to pass any portion of that on um, to somebody who, many of them who don't even know this is happening right now.
Barb, will this be assessed to his taxes? He pays it off in a year?
We need to um, do an invoice to him and then allow time for payment and then assess it to his taxes.
And how much, and he, it'll be one year he has to pay?
Generally, those are a one-year assessment.
Okay.
So we will have that as a one-year assessment and billing will happen as soon as you approve. Well, as we're talking about it, we could go with the findings as they are today and move it forward. I just wanted to be sure that we had this discussion since, you know, unbeknownst and, and we had many conversations with him.
So, is there anything on these charges that we could have, in other words, that were out of his control? Like, something took longer than it should have, or, do you know what I'm asking? The, the question though, when you do that.
I'm asking Barb a question.
Okay, well, I'll get into it next.
You can. I just, I'm trying to find out if, if everything.
I, I believe that we needed every bit of legal guidance in this one that we employed simply because it was a difficult process to move forward and we did not receive response from him.
So we didn't do something and then have to postpone it, that was, that was my.
Because our.
Gotcha.
Go ahead.
Nope. And basically, what I was trying to say then, before I tried to interrupt Barb, or Beth, is that, that we shouldn't have to go through uh, line by line, individual things because that'll be a cluster coming forward in each and other of these proceedings because it should be either in the language beforehand or not.
Well, it says, I think it says they're responsible for all or part. That's what it says in the language.
Right, Cale wondered, let's it open a little bit.
So, so it's like, okay, so are we gonna look at, somebody else might, I mean, I don't like to be just completely black and white because the next situation could be different. I don't know.
Brings me to a question.
I don't have an issue with him paying this. He knew the deal upfront. I'm just saying, this is out of their hands. So did we do everything as rapidly and everything as we could? And Barb's saying yes, and I believe her, so I don't have an issue.
And I believe, I believe Ron mentioned that too. They tried to do things as diligently as they could to save them dollars.
Part of a lot of the expenses too was having to do with this additional hearing.
Right.
Looking at the dates of Rinkinewen and stuff is, he was supposed to provide evidence at that first hearing and he never did.
So he could have stopped, he could have stopped.
He could stop, he could stop the process. He just needed to, and then he came back to the county board in additional time, which he needed to do.
Right, I agree.
So, you know, he could have stopped it and in a, a earlier one that we have done a couple of years ago where we denied those particular landowners, um, some of them paid right away, others needed to um, have it put on their taxes because we did deny, or they withdrew and then they had the expenses up to that point. So at any time, once they find that this isn't going the right way for them, they can also withdraw it. And that makes the proceedings a lot less expensive as well.
Right.
I have a question for Cale. Commissioner Chief Leibnig um, referred to precedent setting. Each of these ditches is unique enough that it would be hard to ever set a precedent, wouldn't it?
Um, I, I guess the past practice has been to charge proceedings like this to petitioners. Um, but there may be circumstances unique to any individual proceeding that, that allows you to deviate from that. And I think when you deviate from that past practice, you just make note in the findings of why the deviation. So I think the option is always there. Um, my recommendation was to charge all costs to petitioners because I felt in this case, um, and based on past practices, that we were very informative to the petitioners, that we believed this might be heading this way, that if they had evidence supporting their petition, it would behoove them to file that early. Um, and, and as much handholding as we did, none of that guidance was followed or accepted. And so I feel that they were informed and here we are.
This is a bigger bill than probably we've had since I've been, this took.
This is a very large bill. Correct. This is a very large bill in comparison to a past practice and that's why I think it also brought it up.
Normally it isn't this large, but he could have not come back the second times.
He could have done what he needed to.
So then would the correct motion be just to move to deny the, the petition from Bert Herzog and Sharon Pingree to have the property removed? Or do we have to include something about the costs in that motion?
Chair and Commissioner, the, uh, motion to deny has already been made by the board. The motion we're looking for is to, um, approve the draft findings. And if you approve them as presented, that would include that paragraph two, which charges a hundred percent of costs to petitioners. If you want some other percentage charged to petitioners and some charged to the ditch, then the motion would be to approve with an amendment to paragraph two and then provide the, the cost splitting that you want to see as part of your motion.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the draft findings as presented.
I'd like to take this in a couple, in two separate motions.
No.
You want to include all of the costs encumbered by the one petitioner?
Yes.
That's your, that's your motion?
That would be A O number two on the, the draft, so that would be the direction we're going.
I'm, I'm making the motion to accept the draft findings as presented, which yes, does contain that.
That encompasses everything.
But it just wraps it all in the one.
Uh, approve the draft findings, correct?
Yes.
And I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
We have a motion. It has been seconded. Is there any additional discussion? I, I look at this in, in three options. Yes, we can charge the one individual who brought forward the petition, the entire amount. We can split the entire amount among all individuals who own property on the ditch. Or we can come up with a different figure, such as have Mr. Herzog pay half and the other half split among the other property owners. So we, we have some, some options there. Yes, Mr. Herzog brought forward the petition because it was in regard to his property, but there were a number of other individuals who came forward and requested that he not be removed. So I can see the benefit on both sides. And it, it worries me a little bit with, this is a large amount of money, that someone in the future may be frightened away from petitioning a board, having a public comment for fear of being saddled with such a, a fee as this. And I do see that all of the individuals on the ditch benefited from this, this situation. We, we all learned something. Everyone learned something and so the, but we already have a.
I, I understand what you're saying, Julie, but sometimes there's things that are a little frivolous and I'm not going to say this was, however, he was told, he's in my, he's a constituent, his property. And so I wanted him to have this hearing, but when he was told that if we go forward, this is going to be on you. And he also kept going forward by getting hiring Ron. So, you know, he, he, right, he went more forward. So I understand what you're saying and I could go either way, but it's also time consuming. It took the board's time and he just, and, and obviously he thinks he was right or he wouldn't have kept going with it. But I don't know where we draw the line.
And, and if I can, um, maybe clarify something that, that Barb had said earlier because Barb and I have had a lot of conversations about this. Part of the reason why the cost is at what it is is because from the very beginning, Mr. Herzog was told, contact a, a viewer or an engineer, have them take a look at the property and determine whether or not they would provide a report. You need to provide factual evidence. Um, from the initial time, he didn't. When he came to the public hearing, he didn't. When he came back to the board during public comment, he didn't. It was after that time that he went and took that step. So a lot of the cost was incurred leading up to that point because he wasn't providing evidence. And then once evidence was provided, that's how we got to this point. So if you look at it, you know, of the, the thirty-nine ninety-four, you know, maybe a thousand dollars of that comes after review of those, um, the evidence that was provided. So most of it was coming before that, prior to, he could have made the process a lot shorter and potentially a lot less expensive if he would have taken the advice from the very beginning.
And I, I would.
Yep.
One more comment. If, when we look at this list of costs, our county staff spend a lot of time, but does not build on this whatsoever. That's all.
And I, I think the, the piece for me that is, I feel that the direction of this board hasn't wavered. I think since he's initially come in, we've, we, including staff as well as the board, everybody's directed him that this might not be something you want to pursue and, and here's why. I think we've given him facts and data and letters and, and he's kind of continued on and then took his own checkbook and hired Ron. Uh, you know, that's, that's a, he's initiated physically and financially the direction of, of how we got here. And with that, I, I don't see a different way to, to move forward on this. I mean, we haven't misguided him or misdirected him or wavered in our position from day one.
I, I mean, I feel bad about it, but he had, so I will call for the question.
Question has been called. We have before us a motion to accept the findings and the entire encumbered costs to be paid by the petitioner. Am I reading that correctly?
Well, whatever the.
Whatever the.
Whatever, whatever the findings.
The findings state.
That's what.
That's correct, Madam Chair. And just a reminder, this is a roll call vote.
Ah, thank you. Then we will, we will have the roll call and Corey, would you conduct the roll call, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shifelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. All right. Where do we go next?
Moving on to set some public hearings.
Shoot. I forgot about that one.
I'm going to request that you set the public hearings now for County Ditch seventeen and nineteen. So we initiated the redetermination on June first for County Ditch seventeen and nineteen. The viewers have been, uh, working very diligently because at the direction of the authorities, we asked that they complete this work by the end of twenty twenty-one, which they're on path to do. The viewers have provided a draft of the redetermination to our office and we are working through, um, any questions that there will be. And they have asked that we now set the general information meeting and a public hearing for that. I did uphold each of you because it would be very important that we have forum at this particular meeting and that we also have at least one or two of you at the informational meeting. So I'd like you to, um, I have two motions. One will be to set the informational meeting for Monday, November eighth at nine thirty. I've chosen the location of the Litchfield Civic Arena and have worked through. This could be a large group. It may not be, but we have seating at the arena and we will also be able to try and provide microphones and some assists so that we have a good communication with them. The viewers will be, um, present. There are five of them. The alternates have been actively involved so that this could move forward. The second item I'd like you to rule is the public hearing and that will take place at five P M. on November Wednesday, November seventeenth. And I've also chosen the Litchfield Civic Arena for that so that the landlords aren't confused at, uh, separate locations. We will be between County Ditch seventeen and nineteen combined because they really do mix and match and there are numerous landowners that would be a part of all. And therefore the review will be just done in, in together.
Madam Chair, motion to set the informational meeting for County Ditch seventeen and nineteen for Monday, November eighth, twenty twenty-one at nine thirty A M. at the Litchfield Civic Arena.
Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
So you want to take them individually?
Correct. It's recommended that we set them separately. They are two individual meetings.
Okay, so you want two separate motions then. Okay. We have a motion. It has been seconded. Any discussion about setting the first date? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? First date has been set.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to set the public hearing to adopt viewer's report for the redetermination of benefits for County Ditch seventeen and nineteen for Wednesday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one at five P M. at the Litchfield Civic Center.
Do I hear a sec?
I will second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion. It has been seconded. Any discussion about setting the second meeting date? Hearing none, we shall take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Moving on to the next and final which item that we have before you today and that is to discuss the redetermination and establishment of records on County Ditch fifteen. So we initiated this process back in February of twenty twenty after we completed the redetermination on County Ditch fifteen. It was necessary because, um, the alignment, cross-sections, profiles and et cetera were in question. And the board at our, our office at the direction of the board did hire Houston Engineer and Joe Lewis provided that information. He has his report correct presented and we now need to accept that at a public hearing, at which time he will also be present to talk to the landowners on that system. So for this one, I have chosen to do that on November first at five P M. And the location being a lot of these people are from the Dassel Cullenwood area, we're going to use the Dassel Event and History Center in Dassel for November first at five P M. would be your motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to set the public hearing, review technical memorandum for reestablish of Meeker County Ditch fifteen public drainage system records for five o'clock on November first, two thousand twenty-one at the Dassel Event and History Center.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we will take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Date has been set.
That concludes the items that John and I have proposed for the Ditch Authority.
And we thank you for your work.
Yes, very much so.
Let me know when you get the first phone call, when you send the invoice on.
Oh, boy.
I think your ears will be burning.
Yeah.
It's kind of difficult, so I agree.
Not going to be pleasant, I know.
Have them call Danny. His number is, number is on the.
Let's see, who's this guy?
Is that what I get for interrupting you? We're going to have to have a motion about that.
Go back to Paul's theory, one nice thing.
I know, I know. We're going to have to put language in there. If you interrupt, you have to deal with the calls.
I will adjourn the County Ditch Authority at this time. We will now reconvene as a county board. We've, uh, heard Brandy's report, so we'll move right into Andrew's report.
Yes, so I have a couple of items for you today. Uh, first and foremost is I was able to get an answer on the funeral cost question earlier.
Oh.
Um, so the first question being that the family of the deceased can choose where they have the service, although it is typically done in Meeker County and typically done here in Litchfield. Uh, there is a maximum cost of three thousand dollars plus mileage to transport the deceased if that transportation is more than twenty miles, up to a, um, total of a hundred and fifty dollars. So the bill in this one was three thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and there's, um, fit within that policy. Uh, the covered costs, as mentioned, only include minimum cemetery and funeral services. Uh, the, if the deceased, their spouse or parents of the deceased was a minor, uh, if they have funds that are available, those funds are used to defray against the county's contribution. We then file a claim against the estate to recover any additional costs. Uh, I, we do have a written policy. It was adopted by the board in two thousand nine that I will share with the, the board via email after this meeting, so that you have that right. Uh, second, uh, included in the packet was, um, annual TIF disclosures for Eden Valley and Litchfield. This is just informational and is required by statute that they notify the county board. So if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer it. Um, otherwise, uh, later this week, starting Wednesday afternoon through Friday, McKell and I will be out at the, um, Minnesota Association of County Administrators and Human Resource Managers, uh, annual conference, uh, up in, at, in the Brainerd area. And, uh, as a reminder, on October twenty-fifth, uh, in the morning, um, AMC regional meeting will be occurring at the Sherburne County Government Center. I plan to be there and hope some of you will be as well. That concludes my report.
Normally I'd say, are you going?
Well, I got a tough decision. That's a CPT meeting day.
Hmm.
I don't know if I want to miss that.
Yeah.
Where in the Brainerd area will you be?
At, uh, it's at Rutgers.
Poor guy.
Taking your golf clubs.
Good for you.
Was it, trying to think who went last. I think Phil and myself. Maybe Paul Vernon last night.
For?
The District Five meeting.
I know Mike Cuberty always used to try to go to that.
The last one we had was you, me and Paul Johnson.
This one, they're going to set the priorities, right, for the policy? I can't remember what that was.
Well, you already set your priorities. And then at the annual meeting in December is when they'll ratify it, basically.
That's when they vote on them.
The, you know, the whole body votes on. This is more regional discussion, regional talk.
They're held to refine policy positions, provide valuable information on specific county issues, and the fall round of meetings gives attendees the opportunity to vote on legislative priorities for the coming year.
Okay, anything else, Andrew?
That is all.
Who would like to go first with your commissioner committee update?
I'll get it out of the way.
All right.
Uh, I had a PAC meeting. Uh, it was just C C, C E owned meeting, where we talked about, um, the expenses and how we were moving forward and if we were going to continue to sell on some of the reserve. And the decision was made that we're going to be using the reserve, hoping that that fund is replenished at some point along the way, but you can't cut it. A lot of the, um, counselors at schools, uh, were picking up seventy-five percent of their, their cost. And so they don't want to just, um, without a little bit of notice because schools, I believe, are already done budgeting. They don't start their bu, they start their budget cycle a little different than we do, their fiscal year is different, so. Um, U cap, uh, meeting, the three hundred and fifty dollar thing came up again for an incentive to get the shot. And spirited discussion, um, they decided, somebody made a motion for it to be one hundred dollars. So they called for the vote. They did it voice. And remember, this is over a Zoom meeting. And, um, I didn't realize I had my video on and, um, they voted and they said it passes and it didn't pass. Some said, and they said, what's the matter, Paul? I said, that didn't pass. So they did a roll call. It didn't pass. Nine of four, didn't pass.
That wasn't even close.
So pleasant. So then I thought, we're moving on. Next item, right? Should have been a case closed? No, the chairman asked for if anybody else wanted to make a different motion. So they went for a different amount. That one failed. So they didn't give up there. They went one more time.
Oh, gosh.
And they managed to pass one for a hundred and fifty dollars.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
I, I, I was just sitting there. I shut my video off, believe me.
I'll bet, yeah.
I mean, that, that to me just, you don't, the motion was gone, move on. They could have amended the motion before they voted on it, but I didn't like the fact.
How are they going to reward the people that already got vaccinated?
See?
They were going to do.
Oh, they're going to get it too? And I, I find it hard to believe that if somebody is not vaccinated by now, that they're going to do it for a hundred and fifty dollars.
I just, I was just disappointed in the order that went.
I, I go back.
You should be.
I go back to the conversation at, at that E O C meeting. I think the, the percentage of society that isn't vaccinated right now, you're actually pushing them farther away from vaccination than encouraging them to do it.
The more public discussion you have about it, the more condemnation or all you can do is educate.
Once you start forcing people or enti, I mean, you're actually pushing that.
And I think as time goes on and it's longer and they have more evidence, you're going to see it differently, but if you're.
Agree.
Out of whose funds now? Where was that hundred and fifty?
Coming out of the U cap funds. They have some funding that was allocated for different, uh, things from either the CARES Act or A R P money that. from either the CARES Act or A R. P. money that.
I see.
They've gotten a lot of resources, um, from CARES and, and A R. P. over the last year, so.
How many employees are they talking about?
They have three hundred.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
Times one fifty.
Yeah.
Smokes.
What percentage is in, what, what percentage? I know, what percentage is unvaccinated?
Uh, they didn't get that stat.
And they said they're gonna pay them all, even those that hit.
They're gonna pay the vaccinated ones, so they, they, there's a possibility.
So it's the whole works.
Unreal.
I would, like I said, I would just really just.
That's pretty disappointing, the way they proceeded and, I, I mean, the results for me, yeah. But that's kind of ridiculous to keep doing it until you get it done, I mean.
I agree.
Yeah. Um, then I had a CPT meeting.
Yeah.
That was, um, very disappointing to me because it, we'd had such a good meeting, the meeting before, this meeting just kind of rolled to a status quo. Barb's shaking her head, I take it you were listening?
Aw.
I thought we were building a little momentum, getting ready to make some change and, um, it stalled. But I did, I did speak at the meeting with a couple of more folks that are feeling exactly like I am. So I'm finding more that are feeling like I am than maybe on the other end of this one. So we'll just keep, that's why I don't want to miss that meeting on the twenty-fifth. Every time I go, I meet somebody and I sit there and talk with them after the meeting and one or two people and I kind of, you know, find out where they're at. So, um, on the good news side of it, uh, McKell sent me a text, or an email, I mean, uh, stating that CPT showed up here in person and gave training.
Good.
Uh, and she said it was okay training.
Once they got going.
Well, they came without a laptop. So they came without their.
Correct me again, CPT stands for?
Counties Providing Technology.
And you came without a laptop.
Just, no, no, no. County provides the technology.
Oh, my goodness.
The literal.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I'm gonna make sure I understood all the acronyms.
Thanks for that clarification.
It was just, it was just disappointing to see us take a step back after we had such a good meeting, the previous one. Hopefully, we'll continue to push forward and.
Change takes time.
It does, it does.
Let's see what government.
I was disappointed after the meeting when, when Commissioner Fox turned around to me and said, well, I guess you guys will probably be stepping out of the H. R. program.
Wow.
You know, he's on the executive committee. Are you giving up already, you know? But, so we'll see where it goes. I'll con- I'll just continue to ask the questions and.
Yeah.
Try and drive what we need, that's all we can do, you know, I'm just one person and, you know. Other than that, I am done. I would like to remind everybody who can, next Wednesday, uh, the Lamp Kinship is having a chili feed. Starts at eleven A M. They give you a really good sized bowl of chili and a piece of cornbread and stuff.
And that's at the Methodist?
Yes.
Drive-through thing?
Yep.
Nice.
Six dollars.
You're paying the six?
Uh, for myself. I gotta get six for my wife if she wants chili too. That's it, thank you.
All right, Beth?
Um, I only had a couple, I had Woodland, uh, Danny and I did, so you can pick up what I forget, I guess. We are still short-staffed. We had, uh, a couple terminations, uh, for clinicians, so we're looking to fill that, trying to do some cross-training, um, to fill in in crisis. The C C. B. H. C., they've submitted their certification, um, I think a site visit might have been for today. I think the fifth. So hopefully we'll have some news and get certification by the first, uh, January, which is gonna be, uh, a, a big thing. Working on with the Department of Health for zero suicide. I think, I don't know, Danny, did you, oh, this was interesting. The Southwestern Mental Health Center ended their cri- mobile crisis and, uh, uh, some other contracts because they are in such a staffing crisis, like everybody else. And they asked Woodland if they could take some of it on and they cannot because they're also in a staffing crisis. So it's starting to affect every area, but affecting mental health badly. Um, they took on a co- Candyall High Jail contract, um, they're, they're getting about a hundred, I think it was a hundred thousand something a year for doing that and takes very little time and I said, you have the, I was a little concerned when I heard that because we're short-staffed, but they have the staffing that they can provide the time, um, they needed. And the, the, uh, contract, uh, talks are continuing, I think, with the directors and the financial people, right?
Yep, fourteenth, I think.
Yeah, so, so that's all good. And the only other one I had was H. R. A. and I, you know, I just sit on that board, I'm not a boarding member, I'm an observer, basically. They had some more discussion on that eightplex and had a visit and looked at it, I guess, in Eden Valley. I don't think they feel they have the capability to take it on at this time. They'd certainly like to operate it if they can get it into voucher rentals. One of the interesting things was the fair market rents came out in the payment standards. So an efficiency in Meeker County, five forty-one, two bedrooms, like eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, three bedrooms was eleven hundred a month, so that's the standard. So when people talk about working for ten dollars an hour, you know, it, it would be tough if we only had one income at that. But I don't think anybody that is working is working for ten hours a day.
I don't even worry to.
No.
So that's all I had this week, I only had two meetings, so.
I think they're not working and making more than ten.
I know, there is the issue, isn't it?
The problem.
That's all I have. Mr. Madam Chairman.
Okay, I'll, I'll go next. Wednesday, September fifteenth, I came in and attended the retirement party for Randy Seelander and that was really nice. They had that downstairs and had a chance to visit with him and his family and his colleagues and, so that was very nice. On the twenty-first, Danny and I are on the extension committee that was held at the Fairgrounds. Some interesting facts, there are three hundred and twenty-seven four-H members in Meeker County. There are eight clubs and a hundred and seven volunteers. So that's, that's a good number of folks within Meeker County involved with the four-H program. The four-H educator gave a nice review of the county fair activities, she gave her annual report. Everyone felt that it was wonderful to have the fair back face to face. The extension program would like to hire a seventy-five percent horticulture expert for the three county area. So a job description and a posting will be forthcoming. Meeker in Motion is a program that in, includes businesses and the Chamber of Commerce folks. They feel that's going very well, it's like a cohort of twenty-two, twenty-three people. They have a meeting every month, they do activities and that helps to promote businesses, um, within Meeker County. Uh, the next extension meeting will be November second. There are several meetings coming up tomorrow, we have the Aquatic Invasive Species Meeting. On the fourteenth, we have the Public Health Three County Meeting and a Library Regional Meeting on the twenty-first. Danny, have you got anything to add, as long as we were on the extension committee?
On the extension, uh, just to clarify too, the, we, this year we're starting this, or next year, January, we're, we're starting a tri-county thing where we use three extension agents and we share them. And before in the past, it was basically one extension person and we're shared with McLeod and then they had to take care of all three subjects. And now we're getting a person with each, uh, specialty for each subject that each of the counties can actually access. So then whenever anybody from Wright, McLeod or Meeker wants a, either horticulture question, uh, livestock question or crop question in terms of that, they can actually ask a specific person that has that specialty versus before, they just went to one person who did not have those specialty things. And that's where the, that's where Barb had just showed you, that's the new extension program that's going forward. So it's, I feel like it's more logical that way. And then you're actually accessing other extension people from Wright too. And then our cost is not, is just the smallest of the three, so I like that portion.
Shared, yeah.
And, um, that's how I had it, really on extension for me. And then, uh, Woodlands, uh, with, uh, Beth, um, that new program basically is a funding mechanism, hopefully for Woodland, said, it's basically a federal, is it a federal program more that see?
C C. B. H. B. C., I believe, so it's, it also is more work here in every aspect of their life, helping them make their appointments, make sure their.
But it should be a.
But it is a good funding mechanism.
Be a funding boost to Woodland Centers and also, it also helps focus on treatment.
Right.
Too, which is just like all the other rest of the health, treatment is more cost savings than, you know, treatment, you know, uh, you know, prevention.
Prevention.
Prevention is what I mean, like.
They're in every aspect of the client's life, so they make sure they stay on their meds, they make sure they get to their.
And that's a big focus of this new program. And it's just like, you know, mental health is no different than physical health and that's why people like Blue Cross, Blue Shield don't want you in the hospital.
Right, that's right. They think that what they get is, it's gonna help.
I.
It's gonna help their funding, for sure.
I think it's gonna help the funding, I also like the fact that it is more of a preventive method. Which is no different than any other health problem you have.
Right.
And the mental part.
I agree.
And, um, that's all I had for committees.
Uh, on September twenty-fourth, uh, we had a meeting with Mid-Minnesota Development Corp., uh, myself. Um, I guess I would have been re- representing County E D. A. a little bit, but also as a commissioner. And then, uh, the City of Eden Valley E D. A., the mayor, the city administrator, I think there was, and then, uh, uh, business owner that is from Plymouth Industries that is looking to expand and relocate to a sixty thousand square foot building in Eden Valley. So kind of put the roundtable, if you will, put our heads together to try and, uh, they're, they're basically, what we kind of came out of at the end of the meeting is that the, the Plymouth Industries is looking for tools that would be available to them. Because they are, the, the three gentlemen that joined us on this, on this WebEx or Zoom was, uh, they were basically putting their package together to pitch to their board of directors to, to purchase the building. They were wondering what was available and different, you know, TIF or abatement or anything like that as well as, um, you know, any E D. A. type of funding. And I, I directed them more towards A M. C. and it looks, because they do a lot more of the commercial type properties and different, and they have revolving loan funds and stuff. So basically, we're putting a package together to, uh, their information, if you will, not really a package. We told them, you know, uh, more of our work would start once they are committed to a project and have numbers in front of them, what some of their needs are. And at this point, they didn't have that, but that is looking pretty, uh, promising. Like, we're hoping to get that building, uh, sold. Uh, Grove City Care on Monday the twenty-seventh, um, things continue to go pretty good there. D H. S. grant is a little short for their two-year funding, um, but they continue to write lots of grants and, uh, seem to always be able to make ends meet. And as far as the care and the, uh, health of the residents there, you know, with COVID, all seems to be going pretty good. They're, you know, n- nothing serious there and they've been doing some of their meetings outside, or gatherings and different activities that they do, friendship group and things like that, so. And then we had to work session on the twenty-eighth and on the twenty-ninth, we had Emergency Services Board, which basically we just went over our five, uh, points, uh, to public safety that we'll be, um, bringing forward in, in the, through the fall here, um, at the annual meeting, uh, to bring forward for legislative action, um, for the coming year. So that's, that's really all I had.
Is there anything else that needs to come before this board today? No, if not, we will adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Took care of lots of business.